Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Danvers Zoning Board of Appeals. If I could ask you all to turn off cell phones or set them to vibrate so we are not interrupted. I will start by introducing our CBA members. Down to my right is Jeff Sauer. Our clerk tonight is Ken Scholes. Myself, the chairman, John Bowner. To my left is Ken Javonan. And online is Corinne Dougherty. Corinne, if I could just get a mic check with you.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Very good. Welcome, Corinne. Our planning director is here, Mr. Brian Zakelli. And I would like to start off, just I see quite an audience out here tonight, which is great. I'm glad the public is participating in our process because that makes our job a lot easier up here. I will explain, we have a couple residential cases. We are on Danvers Cable. I would ask that when you do come up to speak, that you're clear, you're concise, you're into the microphone, you announce your name and your address for our minutes. It allows us to, you know, really hear what's going on. After the clerk reads your case, the applicant will come over here to this microphone and introduce yourself. Tell us what you'd like to do. From there, it'll come back up to the zoning board. The zoning board will ask questions of the applicant if they have them. And from there, I will open it up to the public. For a public comment, I ask the public to go over to this microphone, over to my right, and again, announce yourself and who you are. At that point, we would turn it back over to the zoning board and we will go into deliberation if the applicant is satisfied with what they're presenting. And because this is an open meeting, a public meeting, you'll get to hear our deliberations right here. We don't go into a closed room. And at that point, you'll get a feeling for how the board is voting. I will point out that, you know, there's different thresholds based on what's before. Special permits, variances, they require what's known as a supermajority, which would be a four to one vote. Findings and things of that nature are just a simple majority, which would require a three to two vote. So you'll know how the votes are going and then we can read your options at that point at the end. So with that said, I do not believe we have any minutes to accept. Is that correct?
No, we do not.
Okay. And with that said, Mr. Clerk, if we could get going on our first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first case is 10 Merrill Street, zoned R1. Request for a special permit in accordance with Section 30.2. D of the Danvers zoning bylaw to convert a two-family dwelling into three rental units by adding a new unit over the existing garage. Request is made by Craig Strope K, docket 23-5016.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Joe Bettencourt. I'm an architect with the Design Studio at 14 North Central Street in Peabody, Mass. My client, Craig, is traveling for work, so he's not able to be here this evening, but he might be logged on. So if you have questions...
He's online with us?
He said he was going to try to join, so he may be online.
Okay.
So I'm the only person here for the project.
Okay. You were able to answer all the questions in his behalf.
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Well, tell us what you'd like to do.
So the cover image essentially captures the essence of our project. So to the left is an existing view of the house at 10 Merrill Street. And you see the red circle with the existing garage to the back. So essentially, above to the right is a proposed view. And what we're looking to do is to raise that roof up four to five feet to gain more usable square footage so that we can put that third unit above the existing garage. So that's essentially what we're trying to do. So what's there is to the left, what we're proposing is to the right. If you could go to page number five, please. So this is just for quick context. So 10 Merrill Street essentially sits right in the middle of the street. But the real important note to take away from this is where the area of work is. It's actually tucked away from the street. It's kind of halfway back on the site. So that's the real takeaway from this street. Next slide, please. Proposed plot plan, so to the left is the quote-unquote official plot plan. To the right is my illustrative site plan. And really, what we're saying is, we're going to use the existing footprint. We're not asking to expand. We're going to use the existing... We will have to look at the foundations and the existing structure just to make sure that we're able to build. And if we have to, we'll update the foundations. And we know we're going to be doing structural upgrades as well. But we're going to use the existing footprint. Next slide, please. Just to quickly talk about the nature of the street. So it's an interesting little street. There are some houses that go back to 1850s. We're obviously 1887. The yellow house that you see, that's actually right across the street from our project. And I think it sort of captures the essence of what we're trying to do. So you've got a more prominent house in the front with what looks like some additional square footage, kind of tucked away almost more as a backdrop. So that kind of captures sort of what we're trying to do. But there is a range of scales and texture and grain on that street, and we want to make sure that we don't disrupt that. Next slide, please. So just looking at some of the existing photos of Merrill Street. So the project, and I don't have my pointer, I apologize, but if you're looking at the image to the left, it's actually the back corner. We just want to raise that roof up four to five feet to gain some of that square footage. And we talked about the garage and what we want to do to sort of elevate that a little bit. Next slide. I won't go through this, but essentially, again, we want to take the roof off, lift it up, gain that usable square footage. You might notice it's hard to read here, but we would like to add a proposed new porch to pick up on some of the elements from the front porch and really utilize the horizontal lines as a way to help unify the existing with the proposed. Next slide, please. Just a simple floor plan for record. The arrow to the left on the screen takes you to the existing second floor. The arrow to the right on the screen goes to the proposed new unit. Next slide, please. Basic roof plan. The idea is that because the roofs have been built over time, they're sort of turned and twisted a little bit. We want to make them safe and really unify the roof lines. Next slide, please. So again, just before and after, this is the primary view from the street. So you get a sense of that porch, some of the horizontal lines, and really, you know, trying to maintain that scale that's there today. We don't want to take the roof up so high that it becomes overwhelming, even though it's in the back. Next slide, please. So this is a closer view of that porch that we're talking about. So to the left is the existing entry sequence. To the right is our proposed porch. You'll see we're actually adding a visor too to help scale the project down above the garages. Next slide, please. Again, before and after, you know, if you squint, you can barely notice what we're doing, but it is, the essence of it is that it's pulled to the back. And you can see we're just raising that soffit line about four or five feet. Next slide, please. And then there's just a simple view from the back. Again, what we want to do is make sure that it's a sort of quiet, very understated project that we're trying to do, even with the lighting. So any lighting that we propose to put on the building is going to be indirect. We're not planning to put spotlights and sort of overilluminate anything. But this is just the final view for record. So if anyone has any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ed. So nothing else to add. I must say, the package is nice. The rendering's nice. It helps us get a good idea of what's going on there. I'll stop down there with you, Jeff.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you just explain one more time the ingress and egress of the new unit? How do they get in and out of that unit?
So if you go to the floor plan, please. I'm sorry. It might actually be better to go to the view of the porch. I think that explains it a little bit better. Oh, this one, I think this is perfect here. Yeah. So if you could lift that up just a little bit, please. Thank you. So to the right, you'll notice there are two doors. It's hard to read, but the door that's red, that takes you...
They're red?
Yeah, it's red. It takes you up to the second floor. Once you get to the second floor, if you make a left, you go into the existing second floor unit. There's a stair inside. And then if you make a right, you go to the unit that's above, the proposed unit above the garage.
So it's common stairway? They just one breaks left, one breaks right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the existing garage that there, there's no windows or anything, if I'm looking at it, on the right side at all? Correct? But yet, the new one is going to have two windows or three?
At least two. We haven't really fully developed that yet, but if the concern is with privacy for the neighbors, then we can certainly limit that to one window for each bedroom on that elevation.
And the driveway's staying like it is?
Correct.
So you've got to put six cars in there?
Yes.
So you're jockeying them around as people are coming in and out?
So there are three spaces to the right. There are two in the garage. And then we're going to utilize the existing garage to the left. So there are actually three garage doors.
But the other units that are in the main house have to park in the driveway, right?
I'm not sure how my client will want to sort of divide the spaces. It may be that each unit gets one garage space and one driveway space. I don't know how he's going to...
Okay. Seems a little awkward, especially in a snowstorm, but I have no further questions. Thanks.
Thanks, Ken. Ken J.
So there's going to be, there's two garage doors, right? Existing, and there's going to be two going forward, right?
Correct, yes.
So it doesn't look like a, looks like a straight shot for the garage on the right, but the one on the left doesn't look like, there's some landscaping there and it looks like it's going to have to, car's going to have to like turn a little to get in there. I was just wondering if there's a car in the garage already on the right. How's someone going to wiggle, wiggle into the, is there enough room?
Yeah, it's a good question. I think my graphic might be off. If we look at the plot plan, so there's an existing smaller porch there. We're not going to change the location of that corner. So the entry and exiting sequence that's there today is essentially going to stay the same. We're going to expand the porch closer to the front, but we're not going to change the location of that corner currently.
So what about the landscaping peeking out? That shouldn't be an issue? So how many feet is it from the corner of the porch to the garage?
I don't know if that's on the plot plan. I apologize. I don't have that dimension.
All right. Well, if it can happen now, and then you're saying that it isn't going to be further out.
Yeah, so if you go to page eight, please. Yeah, so you can see the configuration of the two garage doors and how they're, it's practically a straight shot for both. So I think my graphic was maybe a little bit misleading. We don't want to change the location of those doors. They're going to stay as they are.
Okay. And it works now? All right.
I guess it works as best as it can for, you know, a 100-year-old house. Yeah.
Yep. All right. No other questions?
Thanks, Ken. Corinne, I'll go out to you, online.
As far as the existing garage now, is that a functioning garage? Do they use it? Do you know?
Yes, they do use the garage, the, yeah, the two doors. They do use the garage, yes.
Okay, so they use both garage bays and then they use the one to the left. So actually, as of right now, all three of those are functioning?
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay.
Who's speaking online?
Hi, I'm sorry. I didn't introduce myself. My name is Priscilla Valaños Salas. I'm one of the owners of 10 Merrill Street. I jumped in a little bit late. I just wanted to say that that is correct. We use all three garages currently.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Corinne, additional questions?
Yes. Right now, there are two units in the building, correct?
Yes.
And are both of them rented or is one, like, owner occupied?
The lower unit is owner occupied.
And will that stay that way?
I think so. That's correct, Priscilla.
Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thanks, Corinne. Mr. Bettencourt, is there separate utilities on this property right now? Separate electric? And I guess that's really what I'm interested in.
I don't have that answer currently, but we are planning...
Does the owner know?
So Priscilla, do you have separate meters? You know, one for each unit? Separate heating?
Yes, they are. I believe they are separate. Yes, they are. My husband was just confirming.
So right now, there's two electric meters?
Two electric and also separate oil tanks.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Separate oil tanks.
Thank you. And there's a tree currently over that garage with this shooting up, although I understand the footprint's going to stay the same. Does that tree need to be trimmed or taken down? Or what's the situation there?
Possibly. I honestly haven't taken a close enough look at it, but if we think that it's something that needs to happen, then we will do that. And is that something that we have to apply for a special permit for or...
No, I think it's just more, I'm just curious because that obviously is part of the existing ice scape, if you will, or skyscape. But, okay. I think you kind of answered the questions on the parking, but I guess it sounds like, so the idea is, and maybe the owner can address this, there's three garage spots and the idea is one will go with each unit and then three cars would park in the driveway. Is that, am I hearing that correct? And that's your six?
Yes.
And how many bedrooms will the, this newest unit be? The unit number three?
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms. Well, it looks like a very tight driveway and I can see headaches getting in and out, but I don't know if we're here to beat you up on that. It sounds like you're making it kind of work now with two units. I just, I'm not sure how it would work with three, but any additional questions from the board?
I have a question.
Yeah, Jeff, let me start with Jeff. Go ahead.
I would just like to ask Brian a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian. All right, Jeff, sorry.
So he has 57 feet of frontage where 80 is required, and he's obviously not got the eight-foot side setback. So this is pre-existing non-conforming?
Exactly.
Which is why he's not here for a variance?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, also a question to Brian.
Yep.
So this is zoned R1. R2 and R3 have to have owner occupied, but R1 does not. So they could move out if they wanted.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
You good?
Yes.
Anybody else good? Corinne, you good online?
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. I'll go out to the public on this. This is on 10 Merrill Street. If anybody's here would like to be heard, come on up to the mic and identify yourself.
Hi.
Hi, my name's Barbara Caboni and I'm, live at 3 Merrill Street. And he isn't telling you this is a dead-end street, okay? And there's not much parking on the street. So the parking issue for this is going to be a nightmare right there and there. And we already have a couple of multifamilies, you know, right around the area, right on High Street and right on Merrill Street, that have kind of been a nightmare already. And not that these people have been, but I can just see it going that way. And I just, I don't think it's a good idea to have another apartment on this, there's 10 houses on the street and there's no parking.
Well, our bylaw requires two parking spots per unit. So they have laid out six spots on their property and that's all they're required to do. But we hear what you're saying, and I did a site visit myself. I understand the street's a dead-end street. So I don't know if that helps understand it better, but they are providing what's required by our bylaw.
Okay. And that tree, I believe, isn't even on their land. I believe it's on the land behind, the property behind them?
Yep.
Or behind their neighbor?
And they're within their right to trim that tree if they have to.
Right, I understand.
Yeah.
I just feel...
We don't want to see it trimmed either. I mean, we try to...
Right.
Put things through that, you know, lessen the blow, if that's the right word...
Right.
To any neighborhood, so...
Okay. I just, I don't know.
So you're not, you're not in favor of it?
Not at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here on 10 Merrill Street? Raise your hand if you could. Yep, come on up.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. My name's Kristy Harden.
If you could just go into the mic a little bit.
I live at 12 Merrill Street, which is right next door. They're not actually saying everything you need to see with the parking because the garage, they rent space that's filled with someone who doesn't even live there. That turn to the third garage, there can't be cars in the driveway for that car to make that turn. I've been there for, since 1993. When the snow comes, that snow gets pushed right up against our fence to the back where their gate is. We have a deck. If there's windows there, we do lose our privacy. I already have a shadow fence on my deck for privacy, and if they go high, they can look right into my yard. They have motion lights that go off all night long because animals hit them. So it's just annoying. I don't, the street's too short. There's not enough parking. It's going to be a nightmare and there is no way they're going to have those three cars in and out of those garages, period.
Okay. And so you're not in favor of it?
I am not in favor of it. I mean, I don't know where they're going to put the cars if they rent the garage out for space to someone else.
Well, again, that's not anything we can...
Nope.
...approve or disprove, or we can just go with what's being presented to us.
Nope, I understand. I'm just saying, I've been there long enough to know what's going to happen when the snow comes. They don't plow the street well, it's going to be a nightmare.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
So we are not in favor of it.
Would you get Mr. Bettencourt or the owner to respond to any of that?
Yes.
Seems like parking's, you know, seems to be an issue.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree. It is, it is tight. And I think that's sort of the nature of a lot of older homes and owner properties and driveways. So I think we all agree it is, it is tight. It's a pre-existing condition. With regard to the windows on that elevation, we can actually just remove those and just put windows in the front and windows in the back and have no windows on the bedrooms.
So you'd be willing to remove the side windows?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else here on 10 Merrill Street from the public? There we go.
My name's Dave Selsky. I live on Merrill Street, which is a house directly across the street. It's a two-unit condominium, owner occupied in each unit. And the whole street is owner occupied. No rentals there. That is kind of the character of the street. Now, if you take three units and have three people that live there, the owner doesn't know what's going on, very likely won't be there because since it's R1, it's not a requirement. So that concerns me quite a bit. We do have homes just outside our neighborhood which are not owner occupied. Over the last couple of years, I've seen police pull in numerous times. You know, there's been some kind of activity which wasn't the best. And if it's three units that are, no owner that knows what's going on day to day, I'd be afraid that's going to happen. It's just going to change the character of the neighborhood. It's a very quiet neighborhood, very neighborly. Everyone knows each other there. Everybody gets along. That's my concern, that the owner doesn't live there in one of those three units. I think that's a significant issue.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else on 10 Merrill? Yeah? Okay.
Hi, my name is Jean Griffith and I live at 15 Merrill. And my only concern is the snow and the plows coming down the dead end. And I know from experience, trying to get up there to go to work, it's just way too cluttered, way too crowded, being in the dead end, a small, small driveway, no, not enough parking. There's so many little kids now running around. I feel it's dangerous, but that's my opinion and I am not for it.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else on 10 Merrill? Okay, hearing none, I will come back to the board. Is there anything you would like to add to close? No?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
I would like the homeowner to address the, I guess, comment regarding the garage. Are they used to house cars or are they used for another purpose? Because you're presenting to us that all three garage bays will be used for cars as part of this complex. So if they're really being used for something else, then, you know, that's a completely different, I guess, argument. to us that all three garage bays will be used for cars as part of this complex. So if they're really being used for something else, then, you know, that's a completely different, I guess, argument. So please address that concern.
Yeah, sure. At the moment, we don't use them as garages because we actually don't need them. So we rent out the space of that, just the garage itself. And that obviously would change if we add a unit and have tenants that require the garage space. And it wouldn't be an issue with us also. It hasn't been actually for us, hasn't been an issue at all, parking in the drive, but getting in and out, there's enough space. So it's, it's not an issue so far. I don't think it would be even adding the other two spaces. We simply wouldn't rent it anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Well, so Kareen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, with nothing else to present, we will deliberate. And I'll start down there with you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a very tight lot, 57 feet across. And our obligation is to determine whether what is being proposed is more detrimental than what already exists there. And our concerns about the tightness of the parking, the snow removal, and all of the comments from all of the abutters, makes me believe that this would be more detrimental as a three-family than a two, so I am a no.
Thank you, Jeff. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too am concerned with parking. I know they're staying within the footprint with this new garage upper level. I personally have seen this road in the wintertime when they plow it. Not good, not good. And like Jeff said, you know, we heard from the neighbors, not in favor. I'm a no.
Thank you, Ken. And Ken Jay?
I'm also concerned about the parking, but I, I think that could be addressed with the garage doors, garages emptied, and I would want a condition on that, those to be emptied out and not rented, if I was gonna be in favor of it. But I would also strongly want, I don't know if we can get a condition on this, but I would really want people to park in the driveway and in the garages instead of the street because of all the concerns.
Yeah, just a point of order. I don't think we can
Yeah.
Condition that.
And also, I'm concerned about the snow removal comment. Is there other places to put that snow? I mean, I guess that's a question. I mean, I am in favor of it, but with conditions of the garages, I'd say.
Okay.
I'm in favor.
Thanks, Ken. And Kareen?
I agree with Jeff. I think this is more detrimental than what's there now. I don't like the fact that the homeowner wasn't forthcoming or truthful, really, when I asked about the garages. So, and that certainly would be a concern for every neighbor. So I am a no.
Thank you. All right, well, you don't have the votes, so what would you like to do? You can, you know, withdraw without prejudice. If we do take a vote and you're denied, you can't come back for two years, so. Want to take a minute? I don't know if there's another way for you to converse?
Yes.
We can also continue if you want, but I don't see, I'm not sure what you could change to sway the board, but.
Could I just take a minute to
Sure.
To speak
Yep.
With the R.
Be able to do that via phone or something? We can go on our next case and recall you.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Why don't we do that? So we'll, we'll just let them address that, and we'll call our next residential case. Mr. Clerk, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our next case is 18 Cabot Road, zoned R2. Request for a finding under Section 3.11.8.1 and 3.11.8.2 of the Danvers zoning bylaw to allow an extension of an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling with respect to a side yard setback where 15 feet is required and 7 foot 9 is requested. Request is made by Abby Ellis of Savoy Nolan Architects LLC, Dock at 23-5017.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Abby Ellis from Savoy Nolan Architects. With me, joining remotely as the property owner, James Daly, and his son-in-law, J.D., lives in the home with his wife Katrina.
Hi.
How you doing?
Good.
So tell us what you'd like to do.
Possible, we can bring up the plans for us? Thank you. Okay. So on this slide here, outlined in red, we're proposing to put a one-story addition on the right side of the existing home. The R2 district setback lines are highlighted in orange, so you can kind of see that the existing home is non-conforming in respect to actually both side yards and almost in the front, but I do believe that's conforming. So what we're looking to do is to extend an existing non-conforming side yard setback on the right side. And as it currently stands, the overhang projects into the side yard, and that dimension is 7.4 feet, where per the zoning regulations, the extension may be within 50% of that side yard setback. So what we've done is we've inset the edge of the building so that we will not be more than 50% of the required setback.
So you're gonna hold that same setback throughout?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
And that includes the overhang?
That includes the overhang, exactly. And the home is kind of architecturally quite similar to a lot of homes in the neighborhood. And on the right side at 20 Cabot, there's an existing rear addition. On the left side at 16 Cabot, there's a similarly scaled addition that was put on more recently. And just further down the street to the left at 14 Cabot, there's an addition of similar footprint, but it's a two-story addition. So we feel this one-story addition is within the character of the neighborhood, which I'll not impose on any of the neighbors.
Anything else you'd like to add?
For, for record, there's the floor plan. So we're just adding a great room and a home office in the back corner of the home. And then if we scroll to the next sheet, there's some elevation, so you can see that the character of the addition fits with the character of the existing home. I've provided some photographs of the existing homes on both sides of the house, if you'd like to scroll through and just kind of see how those neighbors have modified their homes in similar characteristics.
Is that in the narrative?
It may have been attached to the narrative, yes.
Give me just one second.
Sure.
Now, I guess I'll just ask while Mrs. Zickelli's bringing that up. So is this, besides the addition, will this be a total renovation of this house, or just an addition?
No, it's just an addition. There'll be a small closet added into what's currently a mudroom space, where there's some windows in the backside of the house where the addition will go. They're gonna add a closet into that room. But other than that, the existing home will remain.
So this isn't an in-law or an efflor or anything? You're just putting an addition to this house?
No, just an additional room. The house is a slab-on-grade, so an extra family room gives them the opportunity to have a little more elbow room within the house.
And this is your property on the left?
Property on the left.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. And then purple house is, you can see in the back corner there, there's a, looks like a shed roof line that
Okay.
Is their extension.
Is that it? Just the one photo?
No, there's a couple more. So these are the homes to the left. As I mentioned, number 16 has almost an exactly proportioned addition that was recently put on. And then number 14, just further down the street, has a two-story addition with similar footprint.
Okay, I think I got it.
Thank you.
Anything else you wanna add?
Nope, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Very good. I will go out to Kareen. We'll start with you.
So that the total addition is 23 by 28?
That's correct.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Kareen. Ken Jay?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Ken?
No questions, thank you.
Jeff?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I too don't have any questions. I will go out to the public. This is for 18 Cabot Road. Anybody here from the public if you'd like to speak on this? Hearing, seeing none, I will come back. Kareen, will deliberate?
I would vote for this.
Very good. Ken Jay?
I would, I would vote for this, too.
Jeff? I'm sorry, Ken?
I'll vote for this. I think it's very modest and fits the neighborhood.
And Jeff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the fact that you tucked that wall a little bit to give us our 50%, and I will vote for this. Thank you.
Yeah, I too think this was done with that setback in mind. It's very in keeping with many houses in Woodville. And this looks like a very modest addition, and I don't see it as a detriment at all. So I will entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a finding to allow an extension of an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling under Section 3.11. A, numbers 1 and 2. Existing or proposed degree of the nonconformity is not greater than 50% of the dimensional requirements of the bylaw, 15 feet required, so no less than 7.5 feet. And the board determined that the extension is appropriate in scale and mass for the neighborhood.
I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, we'll recall Mr. Betancourt. Is he here?
I don't see him here.
Do you wanna check? Yeah. Our next case is May 8th, right?
Yeah, I think so, yep.
Pine Street is gonna be on. I don't see any packets, so. Maybe. I mean, they have to do something. Oh, just keep ignoring us. Yep, okay, all right. Hi, Mr. Betancourt, we're gonna recall 10 Merrill Street, and this is Dock at 23-5016.
Yep.
You could just hold your comments, please?
Yep, so we just spoke briefly, and if you could just, for the client's case, because they're both listening, just explain the two different options, so it's very clear to them the choice they're going to make.
Well, this is actually, yeah, I guess the options are, you don't have the votes to get what is a special permit, which is a supermajority, which would require a four-to-one vote. Right now, by my count, you have a one-to-four vote, so you don't have the votes. If we were to vote, you would be denied. That denial, it goes into public record, and you would not be able to reapply for two years. If you withdraw without prejudice, we just withdraw without prejudice, we'll make a motion and no harm, no foul. So those are your options. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Or you can ask for a continuance. Try to modify this to something that will get you the votes. I can't advise you as to what that would be.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess there's really three options. I think, from what I understood from both the public and my fellow board members, is the parking going from two units to three is a concern. I would say with most neighborhoods that are R1 in the downtown area, the parking is already an issue for everyone, right? It's not only because Merrill's a dead-end street, but it's the nature of the entire street, which looks like is mostly multifamilies, but none of them three-family, that I understand. So as some neighbors have pointed out, parking's already an issue, public parking, not parking on your site. And I, I don't speak for the board, but I think if I heard them correctly, they all noted that they felt this would be more detrimental. So I don't know how to get around that one. That would be up to you guys to decide.
Priscilla, would you like to address the board and just let them know what you'd like to do?
Yes. At this time, we'd like to withdraw without prejudice, the application. And we'll come back to this. We'll speak with our neighbors, and we'll make a decision on how to move forward. But there's no need for a vote, a vote tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we dismiss this case without prejudice.
I got a motion to withdraw?
Second.
And I've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Very good.
Thank you, and
Yep.
Thank you for all the feedback and the comments from the neighbors as well.
Sure.
Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, let this crowd fill out.
Yeah, sounds like a good idea.
Okay, folks, we got another case to move along here, so if we could, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our final case is 43 to 45 Dayton Street Highway Corridor Zoned. Request for a finding under Section 3.10. C. 1 of the Danvers zoning bylaw to substitute the current non-conforming residential use of two single-family homes on two lots to a single lot with a four-story, 32-unit multifamily building. Request is made by Jill Elmstrom Mann, Dock at 23-5018.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Attorney Mann, just before you get started, there was, there's been quite a bit of chatter on many fronts, and I am going to start with our planning director. And this is more for the public's benefit, so please listen and pay attention. I think we need to get some clarity about what it is you're asking for and what's allowed. And I will go out to our planning director, Mr. Zickelli.
Thank you, Chair. So I'd gotten a number of different emails and calls about the application in general, so I thought it made sense to kind of talk a little bit, very quickly, three to four minutes about process of why this applicant is here and a little bit of history. So this house, and these two houses, 43 and 45, were built in the 50s, before there was zoning in place. And then in the late 80s, early 90s, this corridor around Route 1 changed to the highway corridor zone. When that changed, when that zoning changed, it gave a protection to this parcel, 'cause it's residential. It's actually, is not allowed at all in the highway corridor zone. So what that does, it allows someone who bought a house in the 50s to, let's say if that house, you know, burns down or whatever, they can build without having to go through any hoops, essentially. So it protects that use. The reason that this applicant is here is that, right now, this residential use is not allowed. They are trying to do a different residential use that is also not allowed. That goes through what's called a finding. It is not a special permit, like the chair talked about, that's a supermajority, and it's not a variance. They're not getting a variance for this. There was a lot of that talk. That's a whole different set of parameters that you need to look at, specifically soil shape and topography. That has nothing to do with this application. So this, this is a finding. The reason why it's here is because there was zoning, there wasn't zoning in the 50s. The zoning changed to highway corridor, and now they're trying to do a use that's also not allowed. There are plenty of uses that are allowed in the highway There are plenty of uses that are allowed in the highway corridor that everyone should be aware of, and I would imagine the applicant might go through that. But what we're, what, the reason why they're here now, I'll just repeat it and then it'll be done. Um, they, uh, a house was built in the fifties, uh, it was allowed at that time. The zoning changed. Because that, it made the property non-conforming. They're trying to go from one non-conforming use, which is a single-family home, to a different non-conforming use, which is a thirty-two, they're, they're choosing to do a thirty-two unit complex. They could do other uses, um, that are by right, that are different than residential, that are in the highway corridor, that are allowed, and you see some of these uses around the area. So, I'll stop there. I don't know if...
I think that's very helpful, Brian. Thank you. And, and again, just to hammer the point home for the public, they're basically looking to exchange the non-conforming use here. They're asking for, um, multi, uh, multiple units. And just realize, if they are not before us asking for a finding, they can do other things by right. So what does that mean? That means they don't come before this board. They just simply go down to town hall and pull an application. So, you just understand that's where we're at. We're here to help everybody understand the process. We don't make the process. This is your town bylaws, and we're just here to help interpret them. So, with that said, I will turn it over to you, Attorney Mann.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Can you please hold your comments? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, as noted, I am an attorney from Middleton, Massachusetts, and I'm here on behalf of forty-five and forty-three Dayton Street LLC. The principals are in the back row. It's Tim Procopio, Tim Procopio, and Tyler Procopio. They're the principals of those two, um, entities. Here also with me this evening is Chris Sprages from Williams and Sprages, who is the civil engineer. Well, I apologize. Nobody's ever told me I'm quiet. From Williams and Sprages. Um, and then also Andrew Jones and Peter Sanders, thank you, from Phoenix Architects. Um, so a lot of my introduction was just done for me, so that's kind of easy. So this is a non-conforming, um, two non-conforming properties. As Ms. Linsky said, it was, they were, um, created and subdivided nineteen fifty and then built thereafter. Both of the single-family homes are legally existing, non-conforming, so at the time they were built, they built completely in accordance with the zoning bylaw, the time they were subdivided, in accordance with the zoning bylaw. Um, they are in the highways, um, corridor district, and they do have, um, under, they don't have enough square footage to make them a conforming lot, even when they're combined. Um, so basically, currently, each of the individual lots would be required to have forty-three thousand, um, five hundred and sixty square feet, which is an acre. Together, they would be combined, and they would be thirty-six thousand, so by combining them, we actually are reducing a non-conforming. Would it be helpful, maybe, if we went to Exhibit H and just showed the over, overhead? I mean, I know that most of the people, the abutters, know the neighborhood well, but maybe it'd just be great to have the board kind of have a refresher, because this particular property is at the end of Dayton Street. So it's one property removed from, um, Route One, and then it's right directly in, um, across from the Weston Hotel, or the Best, Best Western, um, driveway. And then it's also directly in front of that, uh, multi-family, um, project that's right behind you. You're gonna see it in a minute. So I gave you an overhead view of the project. Um, but to keep going, so it's a thirty-six thousand square foot property. They, it is improved by two single-family homes. I'm gonna...
Yeah, you can bring that mic with you, Attorney Mann.
Oh, I can?
Yeah.
And there's a pointer there, too.
Should be something to help you.
Now, special. You're asking me, though, to do two things with two different hands, which is not easy.
Good luck.
Basically, here is our property. Whoop, here's our property, and here is the large, multi-family home, um, I should say, complex that we were talking about. And then directly across the street, if you could, right here is where the Best Western is. Um, and this property, oops, and this property, which is the one that is most proximate to Route One, is actually a commercial use, but it is legally existing, non-conforming. It's a conversion from a single-family home, basically, to now a commercial use. So, as noted, what we are seeking is a special, I mean, I apologize, a finding to allow the substitution of this non-conforming use of single-family homes to a thirty-two unit, multi-family, um, structure. The requirement, in order to reach the finding and actually authorize the substitution, the board is required to find that this project is less detrimental or is substantially more detrimental than the current uses. So what we actually did was went through an exercise of, um, as Ms. Linsky had said, what could we do if it were by right? Um, some of those things that we can do is a, a storage, uh, basically a storage building, self-storage. That building, um, would be much larger than what we're proposing. So what we're proposing is basically a building that is a hundred and twenty-five by seventy-two, that meets all setbacks. It meets the, um, open space requirement, and it is able to connect to all utilities. It has one driveway in, one driveway out, to provide better circulation. It has a full circulation around the entire building. Um, we do provide undercover parking as well as outdoor parking. Now, one of the interesting things is, is I know that your bylaw requires two parking spaces per, per unit, which in this case would be sixty-four parking spaces. We're only suggesting fifty-four. We can, by the way, do sixty-four parking spaces. We can affit them, but we are going to go back to the select, um, the planning board and ask them to give us a waiver, and you can get a waiver, as long as you can demonstrate that the site can handle all sixty-four parking spaces, which it can. So it's our opinion that it is in the best interest of nature, right, and the environment, to not create impervious spaces that are not otherwise necessary. However, the reason for showing that we can actually put in ten parking spaces is to say, if it were required, if something were to happen, a condition can be that those parking spaces must be constructed, and that typically would go through your planning board. So this particular building has a square, a footprint of about eighty-four hundred square feet. If we were to put in a self-storage facility, it'd be about thirteen thousand square feet. The intent is not to, to propose these extravagant, you know, alternative uses. It simply is to say, we are trying to barter and to find a use that is more of a transitional building. So it would allow the, the particular neighborhood to retain a residential feel, but still allow the Procopios to develop the property in an economic manner. So, going through, why would this property be not more detrimental? Um, I know that there were some issues, and people had brought up, oh, the school, the schools would be impacted. And in fact, two single-family homes with four bedrooms each are more likely to generate school-aged children than this particular entire building, because it is two bedrooms that range from about a thousand fifty square feet to six hundred and fifty square feet. There are no outdoor accommodations for children. They are not intended. It is truly intended to be for professionals and for young, young people who are just simply trying to transition from being at home with their parents to independent living, to then eventually buying their own homes. Um, this property will generate affordable housing. So as you know, anytime we, we get more than a certain number of homes, we have to give you a percentage, and this particular number of homes generates twelve and a half percent. We are on the Affordable Housing Trust agenda for next month to discuss with them, um, the aspects of that. So, we are going to actually provide this transition. That's why it's not substantially more detrimental. The school-aged children factor, we believe that we will actually generate less children than the two existing single-family homes. One of the other concerns is traffic. What's interesting about this site is where traffic goes. Um, I did provide a traffic report, and what the bulk of traffic is, especially during peak, is to Route One and over to Armory Street, so away from the residential districts. And actually, even in the peak, there's only one car that would go down Dayton Street, and that's the same car that would go down. That's the same car, basically, during peak hour, by the way, which is what I said, that goes down presently, which is revealed in that traffic impact report that we had provided to you. Um, one of the other things that is more protective, if you will, and a benefit, is that this particular property will be subject to stormwater management requirements. So not only will they tear down existing improvements, but what they're going to do is put in a new stormwater management system that will be compliant with state and local requirements, which is, again, an improvement. This particular property will have all energy-efficient, um, systems, as well as appliances. Um, this two single-family homes are built many, many years ago, are not efficient, do not have energy-efficient appliances in bulk, I would assume, and this particular development will. So again, that would be actually an improvement. Um, this will provide for housing, and as we all know, there's a huge deficit in Massachusetts, as well as many other areas in this, um, country. And they require additional homes for people who have less need than a four-bedroom home. So there's a great demand for a single-family, I mean, for one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and studio apartments, which is what this will generate. I'm trying to think of all the... Oops, oh, that fell on the floor. Thank you. I mean, that's really, in our opinion, how we actually see the project. We see it as being less detrimental than maintaining, or obviously changing to one of the permitted uses. Because as I said, this particular property is legally existing, non-conforming, so protected, and to change to one of the permitted uses would most certainly be an industrial use, a manufacturing use, a self-storage use. It could even be some form of recreational use, you know, indoor recreation. It could be for other types of office space. So for example, while you do not allow contractor storage, you would allow contractor bays. So it would be a place where people could go and park. Um, here's a picture. Oh, perfect, thank you. So, we had met with the abutters before we even started this process, well, after we started the process, but before we applied. We notified all of the abutters that we'd like to meet with them and discuss the project, because we thought it was going to be important to at least get them familiar with the project. And one of the biggest comments was that the massing was too large, and what we had done was, we reduced the massing. Um, in order for the project to be economically viable and to be able to reconstruct and construct this building, we do need the four full stories. Um, but what we had done was, we cut the roof off, and instead of having a large, tall roof structure that actually went to the fifty-five feet, we now go to about forty-eight feet and have brought the roof down, and then created what we believe to be, um, you know, an improved massing, and I think Andrew and Peter can talk to that as well. Um, we have...
Man, if I could just interrupt you one second, just for my own clarification. So was this the initial rendering?
Yes.
Okay, and this is what you've come to?
This is what we're proposing.
Very good. Thank you. Sorry, sorry, Andrew.
No, please, I appreciate the question. Um, we are proposing to have it obviously be fully handicapped accessible. Um, it has an elevator inside, um, and then you can see the ramp on the, on the right-hand side for people to be able to access. In the rear is where you would enter the underground storage. I don't know if you can spin it to the site plan, maybe? There we go. So this is just the ground floor, um, the basement floor, I should say, so you can see where we have the underground parking. And the rear, um, garage door is to the right and obviously near those, the handicap spaces. So, oh, thanks, Chris. There we go. As I had mentioned initially, this project, we intentionally tried to get it so that we would have three-hundred-and-sixty-degree access. So you have the access off of Dayton Street and then access around the entire rear. I think when we initially met with planning, you know, one of the questions was, is it possible to get the fire truck all around? And we did prove that out, that we can drive a fire truck completely around the site. And we did make it only one way in, one way out, to create less confusion relative to the driveways, because right now there are two driveways, and we thought that it would be better to be able to maintain just, um, a one-way traffic flow for this particular project. And that is really the presentation. If you have any questions for either me, or for Chris, Peter, or Andrew, or even the owners.
Okay, so that's, uh, that's about it. I guess, before I turn it over to the board, uh, we, we, um, you know, there's a lot to unpack here, obviously. I just want to understand, um, there's a component of this that requires mass DOTs buy-in. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely. So, um, this entire, this entire property is located on, um, in the, oh, is located in the state highway layout. So, when we go to get our highway, when we go to get our entrances approved, we have to go to mass DOT to get them approved.
And that's because that's our ramp, uh, from Route One is part of this patch of...
It absolutely is. So Dayton Street is actually part of the state highway layout. It stops a little bit beyond our property, but we did do research to confirm that this is all mass DOT.
Okay, and so that means the town engineer would not be involved in any way. It's all mass DOT.
Oh, with regard to the driveway openings, correct.
Very good. Okay, and, um, I have a bunch of questions, but I'm gonna turn it over to my fellow board members, unless you have more to present.
Nope, all set.
Very good. I'll start down there with you, Jeff.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you elaborate a little more on why thirty-six units?
Thirty-two? Absolutely. Essentially, when you're putting up a building of this nature and you have to pay for all of the construction costs, it's economically necessary to provide for that fourth story to be able to have a return on investment. This is going to be held as an apartment complex, so it's not going to be flipped. Um, essentially, they'll hold it, it'll be four affordable units as well, so there are a lot of burdens that are associated with it, and costs of construction, costs of infrastructure are very high. So, the break-even point, if you will, and the profit level and the rate of return that is necessary for the developer yielded thirty-two units.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're very welcome.
No further? Uh, Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, can you go back to the lot lines a little bit for me with this, the whole...
Oh, perfect.
Component. So for instance, to the right of forty-seven, there's a pine tree there. The lot doesn't infringe on that, correct? Or does it? There's a huge pine tree right to the right of forty-seven.
Can you bring this up, Brian? Can you bring that one up?
Yeah. So I guess that would be the, the left, look, from Dayton Street, the left lot line.
Mm-hmm. Forty-seven, right? Okay.
So we're forty-three and forty-five. You're talking about that. Uh, for the record, Mr. Chairman, Chris Sprages, civil engineer from the engineering and survey office of Williams and Sprages.
Thank you.
So your question is with regard to the lot line between forty-five...
I have a couple of lot line questions, but that's my first one.
And he's interested in what's up with that tree?
So in between forty-seven and forty-five, there's a huge pine tree. Does the lot line go all the way over to that pine tree?
I don't remember if we've got that tree located. Let me just...
Oh, there you go.
So, uh, based on the shapes that you're looking at right there, um, the tree is either completely on forty-seven or maybe a little bit on both.
Okay, so that might have to come down, you say? Because you don't show it on this plan. So that's, okay, so this is a maybe.
So is it one of these?
Yeah, they don't, they don't even show it. They might even do that, but I think it's, that's why I decided.
This is a better picture. Could you go back and superimpose the site, because that'll be, that'll be, yeah.
To blink those.
All right, well, let's, let's move on to the next one.
Yeah, go, next question.
So the rear lot line, is it, does it go all the way back to the PVC fence for PMI there, PMI Danvers, or whatever that's called?
Uh, yes, very close to the existing, um, PVC fence that's along that apartment property line.
And then the final one, on the right-hand side, obviously goes right through all those trees. What happens with that?
So, those trees that you're seeing there, are there, there are one very large tree near the, near the front there.
I'm a tree guy. I don't want to see the trees go.
Yep. I'm gonna flip, I'm gonna just flip over to our great, uh, grading plan, just to kind of give you an idea of grading.
Yes, so those trees are...
So on the east side that we share with the, um, I believe it's forty-one, which is the, the lab that's on the corner.
Right.
From the back edge of curb that we're proposing there for those parking spaces, uh, this is a twenty-scale plan. We have about a ten-foot grass strip, and grade-wise, on this side of the property, on the east side of the property, um, the, the elevation of the land from Dayton Street... showing it on the plan, but we have a shot, it looks like, of saving that one. If you can go back to that other plan real quick that showed the trees, I want to just speak to the second one down. Yep, so that one on the corner there, you know, we have proposed new plantings, you know, a series of street trees that include elm and other street tree plantings. But that one on the corner, I think we have a shot at saving that one. Next one down, which is the next bubble shape. It's very close to the lot line, so that one I can't, I can't be sure of. But the next one down, of course, is clearly on the land of 21.
Right.
And then further back, there's no need to take down those trees. There's a gravel area in the back of 43 on our property that goes right, very close to the property line. So I know that back there, we don't have to touch any of those trees.
Okay. I don't think you have any other questions. I'll save for comments.
Thank you, Ken. Ken, Jay.
So where are you going to, where are you going to put the mechanicals, like the AC condensers and any other mechanicals?
Andrew Jones.
Good evening, Chair members. My name's Andrew Jones. I'm representing Phoenix Architects, also the clients, Procopio's, Tim Senior, Junior, and Tyler. So we had a great discussion about this, and we actually provided utility areas right out from the balconies that'll house these condensers. We also designed the roof to actually act as a parapet, so any condensers that left over that need to go up there, we have provided room where they will be blocked and not seen from the street. So there will be no condensers that are visually seen from the building, from the street.
So the balconies are on the back of the building?
There's balconies on the front and the back, correct. But they're hidden by a wall in the front, so...
Okay, like a knee wall?
Yeah, it's actually a full wall, but exactly, same kind of concept.
Okay. I have no other questions. Thanks, Ken.
Kareen.
Yes. It's based on your application that 43 Dayton Street LLC and 45 Dayton Street LLC are the owners of, I guess, both of these properties. So what is their relationship? And how will they manage this project if it's really two separate entities?
Sure. So what'll end up happening is they'll just enter into one construction agreement to build, and then they'll combine and transfer to a new entity. They did buy them at separate periods of time. One was bought in 2021, one was bought in 2022 separately. But if this project is to be approved, then at the time that we actually secure financing and move forward, we'll consolidate those lots under one ownership.
So right now, they're two separate entities because it's kind of just, I guess, the next step, if you get the relief here and additional permitting?
Correct.
And once the building is completed, who would manage the building? Do they plan to hire like a management company, or will this entity actually manage the day-to-day operation of this building?
So most likely, after they get full occupancy, they'll turn it over to a management company, because managing 32 units for people who already have other businesses is going to be a bit rough. So they will hire a professional once it gets fully leased up.
Okay. And what additional permitting would you need for this project?
Sure.
And like, for example, we had a project a while, a while back that came in front of us that needed Mass DOT approval, and the attorney indicated to us that for some of these like cutouts that need to be approved by Mass DOT, it could take up to six months, maybe longer for that. Do you envision it taking that long for your project?
Most likely, yes. So Mass DOT, it's literally a roll of the dice how fast they're going to work on a particular project, and who you get, when you get it, and if they're real familiar with the site. But we do need Mass DOT approval. My guess is it will take six months for it to happen. We have had, you know, we always start conversations with Mass DOT, but they won't even begin the permitting process until and unless you receive approval. So that's why it can be a pretty long period of time, because even if this board does, you know, see, and it's, see, to granting a finding, I still have to then go before the planning board for site plan approval. And as I had indicated, it's site plan approval, and we will request a waiver from the 64 parking spaces, because we just don't think that they're necessary. So we have that level of approval still to go, plus we do have to get storm water management approval or permit as well.
Okay. And before, so you need these approvals before you can go to Mass DOT. And Matt, can you actually begin construction or begin the project before you get Mass DOT approval? Or do you have to wait until that approval is in place?
Well, I have had clients put the cart before the horse and do that. I, no, you're not supposed to. You're supposed to wait till you have all the permits in hand.
Okay. No, 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 I agree, but I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what the timeframe is. So it's quite possible that it could be up to a year before you could even put a shovel in the ground.
Oh, I, on, yes, because if I, if I think I, this must already, so we go, we get the site plan approval, storm water management, we still have to do full construction level plans. That usually takes 60, 90 days before you can apply for a building permit even. So you have all of these different things. So my guess is, before you see this property becoming razed and a shovel literally being put in the ground, it'd probably be 12 months.
Okay. And then, once you have all the approvals in place, do you have any estimate for how long it would take to construct this, you know, the building and until it was ready to be occupied?
Sure. So my clients are actually in the trades, so they can get sort of a leg up and they can do it a little faster. But the current trend is somewhere 12 months, 18 months for a project like this, and that's barring interruptions, and that's barring, you know, labor issues and material delays. But I would think, if I'm at 12 to 18 months, I'm pretty much, oops, on target.
Okay. Okay, so we're talking about two and a half years from now until when people would be moving in?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Now, as far as the affordable units, you stated that you have a meeting next week or in the near future with the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yes.
When you meet with them, is that when you would set the parameters for the affordability component for this project?
So the affordability component under your bylaw is that you address for 80% median? And then we said that we were going to propose two, one or two two-bedrooms. It's going to be up to them how they see where the best fit's going to be, because we have 16 two-bedrooms, 12 one-bedroom, and then four studios. So the trust may say, look, we have more need for a one-bedroom, so we want two one-bedrooms. They, in one studio, so I'm uncertain as to how they'll want to see that allocation. But the Procopio's understand that and realize it's going to be basically, we're going to honor their wishes, because they know what the need is. And then relative to what the affordability and how you determine who comes in, again, that's going to be something we discuss with the trust. It's, under your bylaw, it is the 80% median, though.
Okay, okay. And we had another project just recently who gave a preference to people who, like complied, who were Danvers residents, and I'm wondering if we might be able to put that preference into this project as well. So a preference would be given to people that qualify that are existing residents of Danvers.
I always recommend that to my clients, and I always do a local preference. So the way it would work, it'd be local Danvers residents, and then if the town chose to also do it, I suggest people who actually are employed by the town, so that you maintain that residency connection. And we always try to do the local preferences as a first offer.
Yes.
And we will do that as a condition, absolutely.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
No further questions.
Thank you, Kareen. Attorney man, so let's, let's talk about 43 Dayton as it currently exists.
Mm-hmm.
In doing a site visit, there's two unregistered vehicles there, or construction pieces of equipment. There looks like there's dumped concrete in the back. I'm actually kind of surprised to see the property in that state and year before us. So is this a business? Is this a house that's being rented? I don't understand, because from where I, what I looked at today, two unregistered vehicles, dumped construction materials, and a basement windows full of what looked to be materials. So I'll let you explain to me what is going on at 43 currently.
Hmm, I don't know. So it is actually, they're used as homes. People actually live in them, and...
Are you saying this is the homeowner themselves who are...
Oh, thank you. I was about to look.
Hello, my name's Tim Procopio. I currently am temporarily living, excuse me, temporarily living at 43 Dayton Street, short-term during this time. My wife and my family's home's currently under renovation, so we're living there. Our intent when we purchased the property originally was, it was owned by a very interesting gentleman who lived with his mother for quite some time. He ran his business out of the back of the house, where there's a big overhead garage bay there. And so our intent was to kind of use that as storage for our business, like he was using for his. Every now and again, we have a project to work on in a garage or something to that effect as contractors. And yeah, so that's kind of where it is at the moment. And the opportunity presented itself to purchase the property next to, and, you know, being in the trades, we, you know, kind of always look for opportunities such as that, and that's kind of what initiated our path here today.
Well, again, I'm not, I'm not here to roast you over a barrel, but I guess I would go out to our planning director. This is a residential use. It's not permitted without permitting, correct, to run it otherwise? Or am I misreading that?
It depends on a whole bunch of things, of whether this is potentially a home occupation, or if this is obviously, you know, it can't be a contractor's yard, obviously.
To me, it appears to be a contractor's yard right now.
I would, I would have to look into that to see exactly what use was being done on the site and when, in terms of a commercial use in the back I was not aware of.
Okay.
I mean, if it pleases the board, we're happy to get it all out of there tomorrow.
Well, again, you're here asking for something, and it looks to me that something's going on that's not permitted currently, so it just doesn't, doesn't satisfy us on the right foot here.
It wasn't our intention to do anything. It was, you know, I think if you pull up the Google images of, from when they took last, you would see the, you know, the gentleman before us, big excavator and, you know, his equipment that he held back there.
Okay, all right. I mean, you answered my question. Again, it's unregistered vehicles, though, too.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of...
So that shouldn't happen, right? So additional questions? I think I understand where you're going with the parking, although, again, as somebody who visited there today, you know, obviously, the people who whip off Route 1 onto Dayton Street, it's a very tough corner. I just, what made us pick, well, I guess I, I will answer my own question. I'm assuming we picked the first entrance to be the exit, because you don't want people to have to rip off Route 1 and then on two wheels get into your spot. It gives you a little more space to get in there.
This is truly the best, like, we designed it for the traffic, so I'm sure you saw the traffic report, so this was the better circulation style. It's far better than doing enter and then out. That's exactly why we did it.
Okay.
It gave, gave you, and you're right, gave you a little bit more distance away from Route 1.
I think you've answered most of my questions. And you did say 80% AMI on the four affordable units, correct?
Yes, but we have not yet been before the trust, so...
And the planning board is who you work out the storm water management with?
No, there's a, there's actually...
Or town engineer.
Town engineer.
Town engineer, very good.
But it is a permit that we require.
Yep. Okay, and I will go back to the board just to see if there's additional questions. Kareen, you good out there?
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, and before I go to the public, we have a couple of letters we're going to read into the record. So, Mr. Clerk, if you will.
Bear with me one second.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, we're in receipt of two letters. The first one is from Elaine Clark of 163 Hobart Street. She says, "I'm writing in opposition of the application by Jill Armstrong, man, regarding the property at 4345 Dayton Street. I understand that they are requesting approval to build a four-story building on the site. I recommend that the members of the zoning board of appeals turn down this request. The members of town meeting in Danvers have already stipulated a height restriction on development in the town. This restriction should be honored by the members in all new development." There's also an explanation by Brian stating that they're allowed to bill up, build up to 55 feet in this high-rise corridor zone. So a matter of height is not an issue with this.
Attorney man, I just want to clarify, the height of this is 48 feet, is that correct?
Forty-eight feet, six inches, yes.
Six inches, thank you. Go ahead, Ken.
Sorry. And the second one is from Ted Blake of 11 Anna Drive. He states, "I'm a member of the town finance committee and resident of 11 Anna Drive. We live off Dayton Street, not far from where the proposed zoning variance for this project on Dayton Street. I am extremely opposed to the idea of turning two small, single-family lots into a 32-unit apartment complex at that location. First of all, Highland School is by far the most overcrowded elementary school in the whole district. It isn't close. Most classrooms have well over 20 kids. Second, development off Dayton Street has been quite robust over the last 15 years. We had Endicott Green forced on us because the town wasn't in compliance with state affordable housing mandates. Dozens of single-family homes have been built off of Dayton Street, yet Dayton Street is still essentially a cow path with no sidewalks. It's not safe for our kids to cross, let alone travel on via bike. I can't think of any more egregious way to allow a developer to extract value out of our own town than by allowing this variance." It's not a variance. "If there's an email address to pass this along, I'd be happy to do so," and that's Ted Blake of 11 Anna Drive.
I think there was a response by Brian to clarify that this is not a variance. So again, that is for the, for the benefit of the public that's here tonight to speak. So I would ask that, before I go out to the public, that you please raise your hand. I will call upon you. It's not necessary to have redundant comments, and please keep to the point that this is here for a finding and understand that without this applicant coming before us for this request, there is no avenue for you to speak. So I'm just, I go back to many cases that we've seen on this board. I could, I could highlight a few, but I guess I'll save that for comment. But sometimes, this is your only, only avenue. We're here for you as neighbors and residents also of the town. So with that said, I will go out to the public for hearing on 4345 Dayton Street.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Sorry, there's one more email that's a quick one that I would like to read into the record that didn't get, it's, it might be in behind there, but I'm just going to read it in super quick.
Yep, go ahead.
From Mr. Sean Dunn of 13 Anna Drive. "I'm unable to attend the meeting tonight, but wanted to express my displeasure at finding out about the possibility of this development. My family and I traverse the Dayton Center Street corridor multiple times daily, and I cannot imagine how much worse that area would be with the addition of the vehicles from 32 more families. Additionally, it seems as if the town is perpetually in a state of water shortage, and I don't see how the addition of 32 more families would help this situation. Thank you for your attention, Sean Dunn, 13 Anna Drive."
Thank you. And again, I will also point out to the public, we cannot deny an application based on water or schools. So just understand that. That's not something we can just arbitrarily say, sorry, we can't do it. So again, I think I had a hand over here. I'll start with you. So again, I think I had a hand over here. I'll start with you.
I'm Mary Ellen Simpson from one forty-seven Dayton Street.
Mary Ellen, if you could just point the mic, yeah, there we go.
That's a little better, okay.
Thank you.
I'm at one forty-seven Dayton Street.
Welcome.
First thing, thank you. First thing that popped into my head while we were discussing, the pine tree and trees. Forty-seven should have a buffer zone. So that when they come out of their house, they're not looking at this big, huge building.
Think they've provided that. It's in the rendering, but-
Well, I hope so. I hope so.
But again, that's more of the planning board side of things than us.
Yeah. And then the other thing is, I understand, I was good to understand that this is all, you know, a special situation. I cannot fathom the volume of cars coming out of that unit in the morning to go to work. That, as you said, it's a very small intersection. It's a very busy intersection. And it's just, they come out of Route One and they want to take a left down Amory Road. And it's just, it's very busy now, and I can't fathom the traffic load. And I know you say only one car goes down Dayton Street. Don't worry. Over time, they find out where Dayton Street goes. And before you know it, there's more than one or two. And it's a very serious concern for that intersection. And we don't have sidewalks. And we can't have sidewalks. That's already come up. I've asked them a long time ago because they would have to blast because there's ledge there. Plus, there's no room to put the sidewalks anyway. There's a few scattered around, but that's about it. But I'm really concerned about the volume of traffic that's going to go in and out of this development into that very small area. And they're coming off of Route One, too. They come zipping around and whipping off of Route One, and they come in and want to take a left or want to go straight ahead. And sometimes they use the signal, sometimes they don't. So it's already a little dicey. And when you think of that many cars going to work in the morning, coming home in the afternoon or evening, it's going to be very tight and I think very messy. And I just think the volume is going to be too much.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll go there in the back, yep.
Got to readjust that.
Sure.
Mitch Abatessa for Putnam Lane. "My question is regards to the traffic study that was done. When was it done? What time of year?" And you said during peak hours. Anybody that lives off of Dayton Street knows that there, you know, I'm not talking about the school, the Highlands and everything, but I'll get to that later. There are a large number of buses that are up and down that street during the school year at certain times. You've got the before seven o'clock run from Danvers High School, the Holton Richmond Middle School, and you also have Essex Tech. Then after that run is done, you have the elementary schools. And then after that, you have the small private buses that come to pick up kids that have to go to certain daycare programs and things like that. And then it starts in the afternoon again, reversing that same pattern. So was this study done during the school year? What time? Because I have been involved in other projects that I've gone to and questioned, and they've had, their statistics were done and their traffic surveys were done when they knew it was peak hours, but it was during summer, it was during breaks, it was times like that. And I'm not saying your traffic survey was done that. We just don't know as the public. We don't know when the survey was done.
Well, I have a, I'll have them respond to that, but why don't you get your other questions out as well, and I'll let them respond at the end.
All righty, let me take a look here. Again, the attorney mentioned that there were two homes there right now that are existing, and she said that there would be newer appliances put into the thirty-two, am I correct, the thirty-two unit building? What do I know about electricity is this. If you have two homes with two families in it, chances are you have one refrigerator, maybe two, one electric stove, maybe two, a microwave oven, three or four TVs, one television, but that's, you take that times two. So let's go worst-case scenario. Two refrigerators, two ovens, three televisions. What is that? Take that two, what are we looking at? Six televisions? Four refrigerators and four ovens? You'll have thirty-two separate individual units, no matter how good your environmental plan is, no matter how energy efficient it is, thirty-two is more than the two that are already there. Even if they were not efficient. Thirty-two units with their own toilet, their own refrigerator, their own ovens, their own microwaves, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, that's what I'm saying. So no matter how your environmental plan is or how efficient your, your, your brand-new appliances are, they're energy star rated, there's going to be at least thirty-two of them. Let me keep going. How many bedrooms are in the homes that are there now at the two existing? How many bedrooms are there? I, I don't know if, I could have looked. I didn't have time. I apologize. So how many bedrooms are there at forty-three? Two or three? The two, two or three bedrooms in each? Okay, so five to six bedrooms total.
Please through the chair.
Yep, I apologize.
Your questions are here.
Sorry, let me aim left. So how many bedrooms are there now and how many-
I think it's safe to assume what's there now, they're looking to-
Right.
Greatly expand.
Okay, so we, we all know there's going to be more bedrooms. I apologize for that. Let me keep going here. So the other thing I wanted to know, sorry, I was taking some quick notes with a tiny pencil. So the, the proposal for the plan, we talked, it was mentioned that there would be stormwater runoff and mitigation. I live at four Putnam Lane. I have been in communication with the town about the Scotland Road project on many times. I've become the unofficial stormwater runoff expert in the town. I was in the Salem News. They came to my house. They talked about being flooded. I'm still going back and forth with that. Even if you have the best, I'm sorry, even if they have the best stormwater plan available, you're putting on non-porous hard surfaces everywhere. Right now, you've got two small driveways, a little bit of a walkway, and lots of grass and lots of trees.
There's definitely got to be a change. I think the only thing I could state is right now, there isn't any stormwater management at all on those sites. So one requirement of this applicant would be to now go and manage that. And that would be done through the town engineer.
No, I understand. Believe me, I'm well-versed on that.
So what's your question?
My question is, how is it that you could say that, okay, so I understand it's, it's a loophole where there's no stormwater management now, but there's natural stormwater runoff management with all that green material, grass, trees, et cetera, et cetera. Then if you put on almost two acres of hard, non-porous surface, it has to be dealt with. So the sores are going to get overrun, catch basin possibly might be overflowing. The other thing, which is not necessarily a question, it's something that I'm assuming you all do know as well, that the Putnam Lane pump station is slated for repair. I'm also a town meeting member, and I also had access to some, some issues that we're going to be discussing at the next town meeting. And one of the issues is the Putnam Lane pump station repair. It's going to be rehabbed and refitted for everything for what's existing now. But when that timeframe is of the repair, it's not going to take into consideration another thirty-two units of water being required by this project. So again, it's, it's a, they're not complaints. I apologize if I seem if I'm a little complaining.
That's, we're here to hear everything.
I want people to think about that. Again.
And again, just, again, and I'm not here as an advocate for the applicant, but the applicant-
And I'm not trying to come across as abrasive, but I just want, these are facts.
With that project you speak of, you know, it's just like anybody that would build a house in town. It's, say, it's up to the electric division to be able to provide electricity to that home. And it's also up to the town to, to provide public sewage. So if that pump station's going to be replaced or replaced with a gravity feed or whatever that change is going to be, it's on the town to make sure they understand that this site has a potential to change and their numbers be calculated accordingly.
So I guess my overarching theme is questions that I thought-
Your concern is that the infrastructure's not there to handle this.
Infrastructure, getting back to the school, et cetera, et cetera, which again, just for everybody to know, there's three hundred and eighty-six students enrolled at the Highland Elementary School right now. And that is the closest school. Three hundred and eighty-six. If you go on the Department of Education website and you look at populations, you can look at Danvers Public Schools. You can go filter it by school, and you can look at the population of every school. You can look at the racial breakdown. You can look at everything. But you could look at the number of students per grade. And again, going back to this, having the apartment complex behind us, having been other parts of other towns and cities where they build single-family, I'm doing quote fingers, I'm sorry. They, they decided to do one-bedroom apartments where they think that, and they'd say that it's not designed for people to have children. Children aren't going to live there. Children aren't going to be there. There's no playground for them to go to. But this is what's going to happen. If it's quote-unquote desirable or somewhat determined affordable, people will flock there. They'll have children there. Those two bedrooms will have four people in it, five people, and those kids will be going to school up and down the street. Again, I'm not against anybody having their own children or, or, you know, just starting families. I did as well. I came here and I did that. But there's a lot of issues that people aren't thinking about that. The developers are often going to say, "It's fine. Nobody's going to have any kids there. They're not going to use any water. They're going to shut the lights off. They're going to drive slow. They're not going to have barbecues in the parking lot. They're not going to have parties. They're not going to have any of these problems." Where the developers are just for money. They want to make their money. You said it yourself, the attorney. She said that they want to make it so they can get their profit, so they can get their profit margin met. So it's not about a betterment of the community. It's about profit margin. This is profit margin. This is greed. This is taking a small town and building it to something else, coming in, building this up, leaving, getting the money and getting out of here. Thank you. I apologize.
Attorney man, would you like to address some of those? Particularly what we ended with, how many, you know, kids or students do you think we see this, this building adding?
Zero. On, zero.
Hold on one second. Excuse me, people. There's, there's a way we run this meeting, and I'm not going to have chatter when it's not your turn to speak. This isn't, you know, rocket science here. We're just all trying to work together. And I'm going to ask you kindly to please do that. So please hold your comments. If you'd like to speak publicly, you're more than welcome to. Thank you. Attorney man.
We truly anticipate none. It is not a complex that is welcoming to children.
So your answer to that is you believe there'd be no students?
Yes.
And then what about some of the other points that were brought up, particularly with, I guess, the impact? I mean, I, obviously, traffic's been coming up a lot.
And we did do a full-
Yeah, so talk about the traffic study. I think the gentleman's question centered around what time of year was that study done?
We did it when the school was in session, but Chris Sparagis is an engineer, and I think is best-
Oh, sure.
-positioned to answer those questions.
So I'll just answer a couple of those quick questions so we can move on to the next, to the next comment. But the traffic counts were done on a Thursday, through Thursday, Thursday through Saturday on February sixteenth of this year through February eighteenth. And that was done during the peak morning hours from seven AM to nine AM, and then peak PM hours from four PM to six PM. And then they also did counts on that Saturday from eleven to two.
Okay.
Just to give you, just a quick, a quick understanding of, of traffic generation that's expected from a project like this. The trip generation expected from a project that's a multifamily project of thirty-two units of, of this type is expected to generate twelve additional trips per day during the weekday AM peak and twelve additional trips during the weekday PM peak.
So both morning and evening, it's expect, expectation is twelve additional?
That's right. And that's broken up almost even between, you know, trips coming to the site and trips leaving. It's, it's close to fifty-fifty, a little bit weighted heavy in the morning and to the afternoon, one way and the other. With regard to the stormwater management, we're going to be subject to the town's stormwater bylaw and regulations which, for which there's an application. We're required to meet DEP's stormwater management regulations. And we work together with Stephen King. We prepare, we'll be preparing a full stormwater report. We've already done test holes out, out in the back of the property. The property slopes from Dayton Street towards the back of the property. So we're anticipating an underground stormwater management system under the parking lot in the rear of the property that'll collect stormwater from, from the catch basins on the property and direct it to an underground infiltration chamber that will comply with all ten standards. And we have good soils and the groundwater is relatively deep. We didn't find groundwater down eight to ten feet during our test hole program.
And, and I understand it's early in the project, but if, and maybe this is a best guess. I'm assuming you guys have explored connections to public utilities. What do you know about in the way of public sewage? And as the gentleman talked about with that pump station, where would your tie-in point be? And are you affected by this pump station he brings up?
So I wasn't familiar with the, with the slated pump station improvements for the Putnam Lane pump, pump station. But normally, when a pump station is repaired, you know, there's a, you know, it's based on the, on the sizes of the pipes that are in the system. Now those pipes, the gravity sewer pipes, do not flow full. There's a tremendous amount of capacity in even a very small pipe. Stephen King through DPW and engineering, you know, will require us to provide him with a summary of sewage flow that's expected from the property. I don't expect any issue with sewer. And then with water, we typically, when we are applying and going through the public hearing process at planning board for site plan and review, we will be working with DPW to do a hydrant flow test to make sure there's adequate fire flow and pressure in the neighborhood. Considering that we have that very large hotel across the street and there's quite a bit of grade change, I'm not going to say until we do the hydrant flow test, but I, I'm not expecting a problem.
Okay. And I do know, and as everyone here in the room knows, obviously, there's a large building behind the site. Is it the kind of situation where the tie-in points are the same? Are they on Dayton Street? Do we even know where they are at this point?
So at this time, we know that there's a, a public water and sewer in Dayton Street. And, and our, our connections, you know, we expect-
Would be right there on Dayton.
Right there.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, additional comments from the public. Yeah, we'll go right there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Rob Prentis, one seventy-seven Dayton Street. Earlier tonight, Mr. Bauer said that it's this board's job to determine if this project is more detrimental to the existing conditions. And this project is absolutely detrimental to the existing conditions. I'm sure most people in this room know Dayton Street for the most part doesn't have any sidewalks. So you are literally taking your life into your own hands if you want to walk or bike down that, down that road. What little sidewalks there are are actually very close to this, to this proposed, proposed project. And through you, Mr. Chairman, I'll ask this question, but through you, and then I got a few more points. Where do we expect overflow parking to happen? Because it's going to be inevitable that somebody's going to have a party. So is the parking assigned? And if it is, where do we expect overflow parking to go? Because the, the people that live at Endicott Green or whatever it may be called now, their overflow parking to get their car safely off the street is on the sidewalk on Dayton Street. So you're either walking through the trees or you're now walking on the street.
Well, let me, let me let, let them address that if you can.
So at the time, people actually entered to their leases, yes, there'll be assigned spaces. Most likely, it'll be one per unit for one bedroom and the studio. And then if the two-bedroom units, if people want the second space, they can do it, but that's probably how it would work.
And there would be designated guest spots or is that-
Oh, yeah, we have designated guest spots as well. And as I said, we purposely aren't building out all of the units. I apologize, all of the parking spaces. If there needs to be additional onsite parking, we will create it. We have the capacity to do that.
Okay. Continue.
Okay. So, you know, in regards to the, to the traffic comment, thank you for getting back to us on that it was done on February sixteenth. I encourage anybody and for all the other Dayton Street residents, pull up a chair. You're more than welcome to sit on my front lawn and count more than one car going down the street. It's, Dayton Street has become a main cut-through to people going to Middleton that they want to avoid the traffic on one fourteen. They zip down Dayton Street, take a left on at sixty-two, get to the Cumberland Farms. And this project will absolutely increase traffic on Dayton Street once these residents realize there's a Dunkin' Donuts, House Station, CVS at the end of the street in Middleton. I'm not sure if, based on the comments I heard earlier, we may be powerless to do anything here because it's in the highway corridor. The passive-aggressive threat or take this or get a storage unit isn't really well-received by me. I don't know how anybody else thought about it, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yeah, right here in the front.
Yes, my, my name is Alan Bagarolo. I live at Sixth West Street in Danvers. And the attorney brought up an inj- And the attorney brought up an interesting, interesting point. A fire truck can drive in there, turn around, and come out. I mean, did she say that? What happens when there's cars parked in there? There's no room to turn around. How is a fire truck going to get out of there?
Well, I think, from what I gather, and I'll let them.
I know every subdivision that when, that goes in Damas, or a cul-de-sac has to have enough room for a fire truck to make a complete circle and get out. You won't be able to do it with traffic in there. That's a safety.
Well, I'll let, I'll let them respond to it.
That's a safety issue.
That's a valid concern, Mr. Chairman, but the answer is pretty simple. We have a one-way circulation of traffic in the site. And so our, we ran the town's ladder truck with our truck turning template program. So we have an 18-foot-wide driveway where there are no parking spaces, and then 24 feet wide where we have parking spaces. We left the aisle a little bit wide in these turns. You can see that there's quite a bit of pavement, more than you would normally have in a parking lot. And that's specifically to allow the ladder truck to come in and drive in and drive out, and make those turning movements. So that's how we're able to do that.
Very good. Thank you. Additional questions, sir?
Yeah, I have another question.
Sure.
Let's say there was a fire, and a fire truck drove in there. I don't think they have enough room to keep, to, to stay away from the fire, to treat the fire. It's too, it's too congested. So you're putting the fire equipment in jeopardy, and you're putting the, the firemen in jeopardy. It's not wide enough. Plus, you're going to have cars in there.
I, I think they've, they answered that question, so I'll move on to the next.
All right.
Thank you. Additional, yep, right here.
My name is Joyce Comby. I've lived at 73 Dayton Street for 54 years. It's gone from a dirt street that was oiled to keep the dust down, to a semi-major highway. I think the traffic study that was done, if I'm correct, was done during February vacation. That's not peak time, when kids are not coming back and forth with school buses. I'm concerned also that there are proposals for other things. I want to know if other structures went in there, would they need the same approvals that they're going to need for these apartments?
It's not, it's not tied to structures. It's tied to, to use.
I'm sorry, I used.
No, no, I'm just trying to explain it the way we understand it anyway. So, and I think Mr. Zickelli tried to address this at the beginning. If they choose to do a permitted use that's permitted in the highway corridor.
Right.
They would not come before this board.
Okay.
So they would do it by right, which means they would do a lot of the same work they're doing now as far as tying in water and, and developing the site, but it would just be done strictly through.
Wouldn't need permit.
Permitting approval. And I will go out to Brian to further that point.
So even though it would be a by-right project, I think what you're getting at, or what other approvals would they, would be necessary?
Nothing, right?
No, so they still would have to go in front of the planning board for.
Right.
Site plan review, because they're, and they would still need their stormwater permit, so the stormwater would, you know, they would still have to do that. That's not really a public process. That's engineers working with other engineers. But the, but the planning board, site plan review is, is where we would definitely land. However, site plan review, or site plan in general, cannot be denied for things other than health and safety. So generally, site plan reviews, conditions get put on the permit, it gets massaged, for example, but the reason why they're here first is because they're here for the use. So to your point, they need a stormwater permit, and they also need site plan review.
Would the height restriction on storage units be the same as the height restriction?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
So they could build up with storage.
Higher than what they're proposing, correct.
Right now.
And I just want to clarify, and this is for everybody who's here, school vacation was February 20th through the 25th this year. Not the 16th, so.
And it was done this February?
It was done the week prior.
Okay. I also have a letter here from Sally Kearns that she has asked me to read, if that would be okay.
Sure. Go, go right ahead. Read it in.
It says, "I am unable to attend tonight's meeting, but would like to share my concerns as a resident of Precinct 8. I live at 208 Center Street. My name is Sally Kearns. As I recall, discussions around the development of the former Swing Away Golf, formerly Watson Farm. I recall as well the warnings from Dayton Street residents that having cars entering and exiting Dayton Street so close to where it intersects Armory Road and Newbury Street would be dangerous." And the board heeded those warnings. That's why cars entering and exiting Sophie, which is the complex on Route 1, directly on and off Route 1, this too can be dangerous. By the way, due to the proximity of the next curb cut at Magia Restaurant, the proximity better, but it's better than dumping traffic onto incoming traffic onto Route 1. This plan presents another traffic nightmare from an overly large building for the site. Even if this project was affordable housing, which it isn't, the traffic from a four-story building would be a problem. So we have too large a building, too much traffic, and potential crashes, and no real affordability. I urge the zoning board to take a closer look at what surely will be a source of added vehicle traffic that will burden an already burdened residential street, whose residents deal with more vehicle traffic than most of us can imagine. Thank you, Sally Kearns.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Additional public comments and new, new, new comments, please. Thank you. I think we get it. The traffic's obviously a concern.
Shaleen Potter, 56 Dayton Street. My house happens to be the first house after the highway corridor zone. The, the line goes right between my house and 54.
And I'm sorry, so you're 56?
Fifty-six.
And what is your zone at 56?
Residential.
Res, res three. Thank you.
Yeah, residential three. So I have a lot of concerns, and I don't appreciate being threatened with, oh, you might get a construction vehicle parking lot, or a storage unit, or laboratory, or whatever. I know what can go there, and I know what can't go there. We can't have a Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-thru, so that's out. No Starbucks with a drive-thru, but you can have a restaurant. And yeah, you can have all of these other things. I'm glad to hear that the stormwater needs to be addressed, even if it is a parking lot or a storage.
That's correct.
So that I'm happy about. My concerns are traffic, safety, and water. And I know that this meeting is a finding to continue the non-conforming use. I understand that. I know that planning has to approve the site plan.
That's correct.
I know that the state has to approve the traffic flow. I know that. But how do we get our concerns heard about the traffic? Because right now, I don't know, all right, I know now when they did their, their traffic study, but the study that they did could not take into effect what effect the 32 units on that property would provide. I'm thinking 32, 32 units is 64 cars. 64 people going to work every day and coming back. That's 128, I think, vehicle trips. But if they have kids, or they have to go grocery shopping, it could be anywhere up to 248.
Well, I think I could save us all a lot of time, that traffic studies, in our experience up here, are very subjective. I think we're hearing it loud and clear from all of the people that spoke tonight, that traffic's a concern. So, so you're, you're, you've got your point out. I'm just making that clear. This is your avenue to, to talk about that.
The entrance and the egress to this property is right opposite the intersection of Armory Road and Dayton Street.
That is correct.
And the driveway to the hotel up the hill. And probably, I'm guessing, 300 feet from the highway.
I would say it's a pretty good guess.
The cars zip off of Route 1 and barrel down Dayton Street. The property at number 45, I've been, I've been at 56 for 43 years. I have seen at least four times when the property at 45 has had a car that has driven over the stone wall and landed in their front lawn. So it's, it's a real problem. And yes, it's a, it's a cut-through from Route 1 to 62. This, the cars that come off of Route 1 from the southbound, going southbound on Route 1, that want to turn around and go northbound on Route 1, they take Dayton Street, and then they have to cross over and go down Armory Street, and then they have to cross over and take Center Street to get onto the on-ramp to get onto Route 1 going north. A simple solution, that might cut some of that traffic down, would be if the state would put a sign on Route 1 southbound that says, "To reverse direction, use second exit." Then those cars would go off on Center Street. They would not have to cross over the traffic. They would come right around, and they could get right back on Route 1 going north. I don't know where to suggest.
I don't disagree with you, but it's the same mass DOT that designed Route 35 and Route 62 off-ramps, so I wouldn't hold a lot of faith on that.
Okay. Okay, pedestrians walking down Dayton Street. They don't have sidewalks. If you found a green postcard in your door, I'm responsible. I only did 105 of them, but I walked down Dayton Street. I don't usually walk down Dayton Street. I'm not a walker. I walked down Dayton Street, and I stuck those in everybody's door because when the developer invited the abutters to come to a meeting, there were only three abutters. Well, there's the hotel, there's the Sophie.
Sure.
And then there's four neighbors, one of whom I don't think is here. So I kind of invited a few other people, and then when it hit Facebook, I like invited a few more. So I'm really delighted that you people are all here, because the only way we're going to get anything accomplished is to make our voices known. I'm not saying stop this. I think that a residential use of that property may be better-looking than a 55-foot-tall storage unit.
Sure. Understood.
But I want them to respect our opinions. Do they really need 32 units?
Well, and I think that's what this process is about. I mean, the applicant's here to listen as much as you're here to get your concerns out. So we'd like to call us a working session.
I also would like to commend them, the developers and the architects, because the picture that they showed us on February 2nd did not look like that. I mean, that layout, yes. And I'd like you to please move that dumpster that's over on 47, next to 47 Dayton Street, over to the other side, because that's a commercial building. When the guys come to empty it, there's no, won't be anybody there. But anyway, no, the, the, yes, that building, look how much higher it is. So I'm delighted that you went to 48. I'd like you to block off another whole floor, but I understand. It's busy. Okay, sidewalks. Somebody mentioned the only place the sidewalks is that area. That's because when Sophie went in, or whatever it was, Hawthorne Green.
Swing Away, whatever, yep.
No, it wasn't there. Swing Way, Swing Way did not put the sidewalks in. Swing Way, Swing Way did not put sidewalks in. They gave us about 100 golf balls on our front lawn, but.
All right, if I, if I could, just in the interest of time, just please get your questions out.
I'm sorry. The sidewalks are there because the town required the developer to put them there when that project went in. Now, and that's why.
So you're asking for sidewalks?
I'm asking for sidewalks in front of that place. And if they want to be even more generous, they can go a little bit further down the road, but, at any rate. Okay. The other thing is, there may be 32 new dogs in the neighborhood. All right? Everybody's got a dog, so people are going to be walking. And, and we need, we need to, if the, if the developer can't help with sidewalks, we need the town to do something about sidewalks, because it's not safe. It's not safe for the kids, and there are a lot of kids. There are a lot of kids living, living at Sophie, and there will be kids living.
Sure. And I, I think that is a good point, and maybe something more that would be addressed through the planning board versus the zoning board. We're here really to look at this as an exchange of a non-conforming use. It's not that we're not hearing it, but I'm just, I, I think the neighbors are clearly going to follow this through if it does go through this board, and that would be a stronger place to bring it up.
And where do we discuss the water? Because I don't like.
It's not, it's a non-discussion for this board. It's a non-discussion. We, we can't deny a project based on water.
Is there?
If you, you know, if, if, where, where that can happen is through town meeting and changes to the bylaws, but we, as a five, six-member board, can't arbitrarily deny somebody because we don't want them here using our water. It's just, you know, it's, it wouldn't be fair to any business developer or single-family home that was be put in town.
Are there requirements for new developments to use water-conserving?
Well, sure. I think, I think Attorney Man mentioned that, that, and although I think the gentleman made a good point, yeah, this will be 32 units and more demand on electricity, but they are required to build by today's standards, which I don't know about any of you, but older homes, you know, if you think back in the day, they all had five-gallon flushing toilets, right? Now they're a gallon, I think. So, so they'll be, yeah, they'll be required, and it'll be efficient in those ways where it'll be.
And regulate it.
Yeah.
So we don't have to go any further.
No, that's, that's by code.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Again, new comments, please. Yeah, right back there. We've heard about parking. I think we got it.
I disagree with everything everyone else said, and I won't, I won't say it again. Kim Casella, 91.
If you could just speak into the mic a little closer.
I'm Kim Casella from 91 Dayton Street. Sean Phillips here from 91 as well. A lot of the same wastewater energy efficiency improvements, that's a bunch of BS. Traffic studies, same. Wildlife, we all, I think everyone in that area is, we are overrun with coyotes, bunnies, deer. Where are those all going to be? Turkeys? Well, there's more dead turkeys and bunnies on that street than I've seen.
Yeah.
Anywhere. And now we're paving just more space that they are trying to live in, so that's just causing more issues. Somebody, my abutter over here, my nice friend at 4 Putnam, mentioned the sewer improvements that are happening, and you said that that needs to.
I'm sorry, sewer improvements?
The Putnam Pump Station.
Oh, the sewer pump station.
There was an issue over the summer. I wasn't really affected. We had a, a strong smell throughout our house, but my direct next-door neighbor at 89 had the entire sewer from the street back up into their basement and fill with, 4th of July weekend, fill with sewage.
Yeah, that's, I'm sure very unpleasant.
Because there's been some issues. Yeah. So there's been some issues already on that street.
I think, again, I, you know, if a project like this were to go through, obviously, that's going to be looked at in, in quite a bit of detail to make sure that the capacity is there, and if it's not, you know, what, what does the town and the developer do to address it?
There is also, again, with the traffic, I personally walk across that street several times a week in broad daylight and in the dark, but with children and with dogs. And several times, I have had people stop for me, and someone behind them try to go around and run us over, to the point where I screamed expletives at somebody. He came, he came this close to my seven-year-old nephew, who then called me out for using words that auntie's not supposed to use. Very, very dangerous. We also, most of us have mailboxes directly on the street without any buffer between traffic. There's not even like a, a white stripe there for us to stand in without getting killed.
Yeah, no, I, I think we've got that loud and clear.
So, I, I mean, the developers have stated that this will quote-unquote "not be more detrimental than what's there," but they don't live off of Dayton Street or on Dayton Street, and they're just going to give us a problem that, you know, we don't, they don't have to live with. Again, accidents, same thing. Our neighborhood's full of accidents, but we've all discussed that. And that's probably the only new, the new things I had to add, but definitely not in But definitely not in favor.
Very good, thank you. Additional comments from the public on 43 and 45 Dayton? If it's something new, sure. You'd have to go to the microphone. No one at home can hear you from there.
Is there any way to delay?
Can you re-announce your name, please?
Joyce Comby, 73 Dayton Street. Is there any way to delay this vote tonight so that the board can do a walkthrough of that area? I know you said you were there, I don't know if anyone else is there.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've done site visits.
I've done the site.
Most of us all go usually is, we, we've asked applicants before to.
At different times?
To do a, to, to do a posting so we can see where the building sits on the site. I don't know if we're at the point where this is going to get voted on tonight. I think that would be ferreted out through our comments, so.
Okay.
I don't know if we're prepared to vote on it tonight, but.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. As you could heard, I mean, the, the developer did say, you know, we're looking at, you know, at best case, two and a half years before anything were to happen. But Attorney Mann, let me go out to you, because a couple of things to unpack here that came up during public discussion. Hold on. They asked about, what are your thoughts about a sidewalk out front? Is that something you could take as a condition?
We already have it on the plan.
It's already there, thank you. And as far as moving the dumpster towards the, it looks like right-hand side of the property versus the left?
It's located the right-hand side. It's located on that side of the property because the Sophie property, right behind, is where their dumpster is, so we thought it was better to co-locate. That's why it's there.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't make, does it really matter to us to move it? It doesn't, but it seems more appropriate to keep it together.
Well, I can see where the neighbors are going with that, because that's a commercial-use property, and, you know, I could see wanting the dumpster on that side versus next to the residence, so.
In the only reason.
And I understand your logic, logic too, so without living next to it, I guess I can't say what's best, but if, if SoFi's already got a dumpster there, you know, I, I guess I wouldn't want to hear trash trucks twice. Maybe I don't hear it if it's on the other side, so just something to think about. I think, again, that's something that gets maybe more ferreted out in the, the planning board meetings, if it gets to that point. Okay, somebody in the back here had a comment. Raise your hand, right here. There we go.
Hi, Lori Pyburn, 30 Putnam Lane. I agree with all of these comments that have been made, but one thing, thing that has stricken me during all of our concerns and expressing our concerns is the developers are over here chuckling.
I'm sorry, the developers, what?
They're over here chuckling and they're smirking. So, they're not taking our concern seriously. I was sitting right next to them.
Well, I, I don't want to turn this into he said, she said, but what matters is what's being, hold on. Let's, let's go on. We're here to work together, right? What matters is what is being presented to your zoning board of appeals, both from the applicant and from the public, and then we will disseminate what we feel is detrimental, undetrimental, et cetera. So, I can't, honestly, I mean, we have a room of 70 people here, I can't tell who's doing what back there. But I, I understand the frustration. I think the point is, is we're all trying to get to a, a solution that works for everyone.
I think that they should be listening to our concerns.
Sure.
And not snickering.
Absolutely.
At our concerns.
Thank you for the comment. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Kathy Arno, and I live at 75 Dayton Street for over 50 years. I want to tell you that you can hear the trash being picked up by the dump. It happens at 6 o'clock every morning.
Okay, let me, let me stop you right there, so, and only because I've lived through this myself.
Yeah.
The town has a bylaw that trash pickup is not permitted prior to 7:00 a.m. So, that's an enforceable action. You, you need to be diligent about it, but you can call the police and speak with the management company over there. They may not know that our bylaw is nothing prior to 7:00 a.m. So, not discrediting what you're saying?
No, thank you.
Because I lived through it myself. McDonald's used to do it to me.
Yeah.
And it was very frustrating, so I get it.
Thank you. So, what, what may seem to be a, a milder inconvenience for the developer to put the trash on the other side by the highway?
It sounds like it makes life better if it were to happen.
Hugely, yeah. I mean, one small little piece of.
I think they said they were okay with moving it, so.
And to actually come out and, and say that there's, there will be no children in this development, I'm not quite sure you can rent or lease apartments with the stipulation of no kids.
No, I don't think they, and Attorney Mann, I'll, I'll let her respond to that, but I, I don't think they're saying, I think their expectation is there won't be kids, but no, they can't deny someone just because they have kids. That's correct.
Okay. And the other thing is regarding their parking, if there's, there's supposed to be two.
Two spaces.
Two spaces per unit, and they only have, what, 50?
Well, they have 54, but they have the ability to go to 64, and that's if the planning board asks for it.
Okay.
Currently, they're showing 54.
Okay.
I think it was 21 underneath, is that correct? Would you like to respond, Attorney Mann?
Yes, there's 21 under, 33 outside, and we do have the ability to go for, up to two spaces per unit.
And maybe if you can, just for the benefit of all of us, if you were adding the 10 spaces, where do they go on the site?
Throughout the site. Chris, do you want to? I mean, things have to get reshifted, but we did prove out that we could do it.
I mean, are the existing spots going to reduce to put those other 10 spots, or are they just new locations?
So, they would be, we'd have to eliminate some of the green space in order to make that happen.
And can you, while you're talking about it, maybe show us snow storage as well.
And then there were a series of, of parallel spaces across the back.
So, there'd be parallel spots there?
To get, to get to the, to get to that number.
And that would be 10 additional spots, so nothing underneath, it would be off-surface.
That's correct. Now, with regard to, oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
You said a question about.
Just snow storage, just if you could point it out.
Yep, so, snow storage is, is limited on, on the property, and I'll just kind of circle those areas. The, the symbols that look like trees are in fact trees, and so all of the green areas that are next to parking spaces and/or driveways that are in that vicinity of the trees are all snow storage areas.
Okay, very good. Does that answer your question on parking?
So, it does, but it doesn't give me a warm, fuzzy feeling.
Sure.
Because, seriously, because we get one foot or two feet of snow, a storm, we're going to be, we're going to be.
Yeah, just understand that they are required, again, by our bylaws, if they can't store the snow on their site, they have to take it away. They have to bring it off-site. So, that's a requirement.
So, is that something that we police as, as, as residents, when we see it on Dayton Street?
Well, they're not allowed to put it on Dayton Street.
Or pushed out on Dayton Street?
Not, not allowed.
Hmm, okay.
Again, another actionable item.
I know. I'm going to be busy.
It's tough, it's tough being a resident.
I know, I know. So.
I mean, and by the way, I agree with the dumpster, whoever brought it up, I think that's, you know, a, a good call on neighbor's part. I can see why you'd want to move it closer to Route 1, so, and the applicant's willing to do that.
Right. And for as long as I've lived on Dayton Street, there was never any sidewalks, okay? Because it was a dirt road, it was a sleepy town.
Yep, we've got that loud and clear.
Okay. So, what I'm saying is, now the street has a double-yellow line with no white line, or I think now there is a white line, now that we, that it got paved. But, and, and there has been multiple times where we have requested sidewalks, and there's absolutely no, no action there. So, again, that's safety for, for people walking, kids playing, and the only other thing is that I wanted to, again, express is coming up Armory Street, taking a left onto Dayton Street. I, I think it's hugely inappropriate for the attorney to say that they go, take a right onto, and go to Route 1, because clearly she hasn't lived there, or she hasn't been there, seeing people. Very rarely do people come up Armory and take a right onto Route 1, because, as someone else said here, there's an, there's another exit up a little further on Center Street. So, the people that are coming under the bridge facing the, the hotel are mainly taking a left onto, onto Dayton Street. And so now you have Route 1 traffic merging onto Dayton Street, the laboratory place of business coming onto Dayton Street, and now you're going to have 32.
Yeah, dare I say the L-word, because to me, it seems like lights are warranted at that intersection, but I won't say it.
Again, right, right?
Yeah, and we understand where you guys are coming from, we get it. The sidewalk and traffic is a lot going on, a lot to unpack of that.
Right, and, and so for, for, and, and I guess I, I wasn't around, or maybe I was this big, when the, the Dayton Street was, that part of it was part of the corridor, the highway corridor. Why, why can't we revert it back to having it just residential, as-is? Why is there a need to build another building with 32 units in, in the town of Deandrus? I, I just don't understand it. And, and I'm wondering why that zoning was reverted back.
I, I don't know if I can answer that one. I don't know if the developer can answer that, but it is what it is, and that's what our bylaw is right now, so that's what we're here to decide.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public here. Only new comments, though, we really like to move on. We've been at this for over two hours.
I think you'd like to hear about some of our comments.
This is Mitch Abatessa, still from Fort Putnam Lane, I haven't moved yet. So, this is an easy one for you guys.
Over here, please, to the chair.
I apologize, I apologize. This is, this is an easy one for everybody to answer. Question, when were the test holes dug? Was it during the dry season, was it during the wet season at the site? And the other question is, what type of soil did they come across? Was it A, B, C? Was it lower grade? Because I know in Vermont, I believe, you cannot build on a Type C soil because it's too sedimentous with clay, so that's.
That's your question, so, okay, thank you. You got to respond, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The test holes were excavated within the last 30 days.
Okay.
And they were logged by a DAP-approved soil evaluator, and so the methodology that's used today to estimate, to determine estimated seasonal high groundwater table is based on the colors of the soil, and so it doesn't matter what time of the year that we do testing.
Okay.
So, we know that there was no groundwater observed in any of the test holes that we dug in the back there, and the reason why is because the soils are very granular in nature, and so they're very suitable for, you know, for stormwater infiltration and that sort of thing. So, we have good, we're lucky to have good soils on this site.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, unless there's new comments, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay, and thank you all for participating. Again, you make our job easier.
I apologize, there's a question over there.
He, he, he did answer it. Come to the microphone, please. He said the test was done within 30 days.
I know, but what type? I'm sorry, was it Type A, was it Type B, was it C, was it, what type? There are certain gradients that they used to, when they did the development behind me at Putnam Lane, they were, they did test holes, and the coloring was mentioned, and there, there was certain soil types. So, which type? My question is, if they could please, was it A, B, C?
Okay, I got it.
Thank you.
Sure, so based, based on the, in situ testing, the testing that we observed in the hole, it looks like we're going to have a hydrologic soil group, soil classification of either A or B for the soils on our site.
A or B.
So, A, B, C, D, A being sands and gravels, very permeable, D being wetland soil, not permeable.
Okay, so A or B. Okay, and that was done through, and within the last 30 days?
That's right.
Very good, thank you. Okay, any additional questions or comments from the public? All right, and again, now, thank you all for, again, I've said this before, but as people that don't live in the neighborhood, we see it now through your eyes, and that's what the process is about. So, public comment is a very important part of how we come across these projects and how we figure it all out. So, with that said, Attorney Mann, at this point, do you have anything else you'd like to present, or would you like to hear some of our comments, and what are your thoughts about a site layout and things of this nature, or would you just like to have us deliberate and see where we're at? It's your call at this point.
I mean, if it pleases the board and you want to see the site before, you can appropriately deliberate. I would never not agree with that.
Well, I think we've seen it, but, you know, I don't think it's a big enough site.
We've seen it, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think that's necessary from our perspective.
We would love to hear your comments and your deliberations, without a doubt, yes.
All right, so we'll, and then before, board members, before I do turn it over comments, is just any additional questions from the board? Karine, I'll start out there. You have any additional questions that have come up through the public hearing process?
Um, no, no additional questions.
Okay, and Jeff?
No.
Ken? Ken J., and I don't.
Nope.
I believe you've addressed quite a bit. I think we all have a good handle on that. So, with that said, I'm going to turn it over for comments, and we'll see where we're at, okay? So, Jeff, we'll start down there with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Clearly, through the comments of the public and after the presentation, I clearly believe that two houses is less detrimental than 32 units. That's pretty clear. I don't buy the argument about the energy efficiency or the groundwater management or any of that stuff, but the public should be aware, and I think they are aware, that just because what they're proposing is more detrimental, it's probably less detrimental than a lot of other things that could go there. So, they have to keep that in mind. But, I'm against this project for a totally different reason, and that is because in the trading of one use for another, they are completely ignoring residential dimensional requirements and density. I mean, we have multifamily residential requirements in the zoning bylaw, 7,500 square feet per unit. You're proposing a building that's got 1,000 square feet per unit. You know, 40-foot setbacks, everything that makes a building residential in nature is implicitly buried in the bylaw by the setbacks and the size and the amount of area you need, and the parking spaces and all that. And although this building conforms to the highway corridor dimensional requirements, they're not asking for a highway corridor building, they're asking for a residential building. And so that's why I'm in disagreement with it. So, I will not vote for this.
So, you are a no at this point, thank you. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I live off of Center Street. I travel this road all the time. And like the chairman said, you know, we, every project, we get traffic studies. They're never detrimental, ever. They'll never say, "This traffic study was so bad, we can't do this project." Never. So, traffic is not going to be an issue. You can't fight it. You're not going to win. That being said, I don't want the, this to change use. I don't want to come down Armory Row and see a 55-foot building. I don't want that. I want it to stay residential. And also, that being said, I think they need to tone this down. 32 units, to me, is just too much to have frontage on Dayton Street. And so for that reason, I'm a no.
You don't like the size, okay, thank you. And Ken J.
Yeah, so I think it's a tricky area with the traffic. We've heard a lot about that. There's lots of residential houses across the street, there's some capes. This is going to dwarf them. I, I just think it's much too tall. It's, it's just too big. I mean, I would, I would like to see it a lot smaller. So, I wouldn't vote for this.
Thank you, Ken. And Karine?
I, I agree with other people on the board, my other co-members. I, I think the project is too big. I'm not a no for any type of project. I'm a no for this specific design. I think 32 units is too big, especially on the piece of property that it's on. So, I am a no right now.
Thank you, Karine. Without this project coming before us, I would be, I think, stating the obvious, that I find that whole area to be kind of a mess, for lack of better words, currently. I think the fact that you can get off Route 1 onto Dayton Street, and then you can get off just, you know, I don't even know, maybe 200 yards later, and get to Center Street, to me, that's trouble enough, right? And as neighbors that all live there, I've heard countless examples of that tonight. Quite frankly, Armory Row doesn't even make sense to me. I wonder if that should just go away? And you can't do that little matchbox wheels move off of Route 1 and get yourself to 95? But, so, okay, that's one problem, and that's a problem that's there whether this project goes forward or not. And, you know, we had a lot of talk tonight about Mass DOT. You know, again, I'm like you, I have an opinion. I don't have a lot of faith in Mass DOT. I know they try hard to get things right. And so with that said, I don't like the whole traffic component of it. Just being there today, visiting, I was there maybe 10, 15 minutes, and I got a real feel, and this was at about 3:00, 3:15, about what goes on coming off of Route 1 and in that whole intersection. So I get all that. The other point, though, and I think Ken alluded to this a little bit, I don't want to see a big commercial building there either, and I don't think the neighbors want to see that. Does that mean I want this one? No, not necessarily, not at this size. But I always go back to Danielle's, which was a project that came before us down in the Tapleyville area, and the neighbors were up in arms about this project. They did not want this. And when it got pointed out to them that it's a commercial use there, and there could be a machine shop, or a business that took 18-wheeler truck deliveries all day, they kind of changed their mind a little bit about it. Now, I'm not here to change your mind. However, just understand, if they're not before this board and a commercial use goes in there, it may be something way more detrimental than this apartment building. However, I am a no at this point, Attorney man. I think, for me, it's too large. I think at a slightly smaller scale, or some scale smaller to reduce it, I think I could see it. I don't think there's an easy solution traffic-wise. I do think you guys have done a lot of good work to not only meet with the neighbors, redesign the building. I think the flow is pretty good on the site, but for those reasons, I'm a no. And, you know, again, I appreciate the public's input tonight. So obviously, you don't have the votes right now. What would you like to do? And I think if I scored it right, I don't think any members were in agreement with what you've currently presented, which is not that, right?
No.
That was the original, right, that we have up there?
That was the original.
Right.
Would it be possible to just talk to my client for two minutes outside?
Sure, yeah, we could take a quick five-minute reset. The dammers' zoning board of appeals is back in session from a short recess. So Attorney man, we were discussing what you'd like to do as far as this.
And I conferred with my clients, and we would like to continue the meeting until the May 8th meeting. It will give us the opportunity to be able to give you additional information, and I think to support a project, and to assuage some of the concerns that the board members had, as well as the public. I mean, we take all of their comments to heart, and we really do try to make the site work for everyone.
Sure, that sounds great. The only thing I would point out is we would, if there were going to be updated plans or new renderings, we would just like to have them the Tuesday prior, which would be May 2nd, if I'm not correct. Am I correct, Brian, I'm leaning to you? May 2nd?
For the...
New drawings.
Yes, correct, the Thursday before.
So any new information, that way it's time to get out to the board so we can review it.
No, you said Thursday, but you said Tuesday, which one is it?
Oh, sorry, whoa.
He's in charge, so I...
I just want to make sure.
It is the Tuesday, sorry.
Okay, no worries.
May 2nd, Tuesday. And do you think that's enough time, or we can push it out to...
Oh, they definitely...
22nd, everyone.
They definitely prefer to have it the more proximity.
All right, so with that said, could I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I've moved that we continue this case to our May 8th meeting.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll see you May 8th, and thank you for the neighbors. Motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
And seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, dammers.
Good night, dammers.